Good evening, this is Enid Lapelis. It's October 26, 2020, and it's 5:00 PM. We'll do that after. We're doing it next.
Oh, sorry.
As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you please all join me in the prayer of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other staff who is present. So just by looking, I see three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. The whole council is present. I have to state your name because I know your names. Okay. Other town officials and staff that are present. So Mr. Kellogg, as the moderator, do you see anybody? Is there anybody that you know is virtually here or whatever?
I believe Mr. Nowacki is one of the callers.
Chris Nowacki, here I am, present.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Also present, Special Town Council Vincent Marino.
Okay. Thank you. So I hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. Please note that the, and I declare a quorum. Please note that this meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting in compliance with the Governor's executive orders. Such members of this body, designated staff by the presenters and members of the press, may attend in person or remotely. All members of the public may attend remotely using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. The number of in-person attendees have also been permitted based upon the reduced capacity of the meeting room. This meeting is being conducted in real time, is open to the public, and any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. A copy of the agenda and any related material has been posted to the Town of Monroe website for public inspection. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this hybrid meeting remotely at any one time. Remote access is granted solely by the technology provider and is not controlled by the Town of Monroe. In the unlikely event it appears we are approaching said limit, the chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. This meeting is being recorded, and while we ask those participating remotely to mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, anything you say, do, or is displayed on your screen may become part of the recording, which will be posted on the town's website within seven days. Use of chat features is prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting at any time. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will include and permit public participation. Any written comments from the public we are in the meeting, which would otherwise be germane to public participation and received between the date the agenda was posted through one hour before the start of this meeting will be read into the reading, into the record during the public participation portion of the meeting. Are there any objectives to meet as we send calendar as presented?
Could I ask to move item C, Resolution 20-103, to New Business D?
Okay, hang on. So C, Resolution 103, correct? On to New Business, make it D. Thanks. Thank you. And other than that, for communications, I'm going to add two things to the communication list. For J, I'm putting on the letter from Vincent Marino to Attorney McTaggart. Then on for B, that's A, and then for K, email from Vincent Marino to Attorney McTaggart.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Item J should be the letter from Attorney McTaggart to Attorney Vincent Marino.
Okay, thank you. Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Going on to public participation, I don't see anybody, correct? Mr. Kellogg, moderator.
If any one in the public wishes to address this council, please unmute your mic and indicate a desire to speak.
Okay, seeing no one. Going on to appointments. Mr. Sean, Resolution 20-106, Mr. O'Rourke.
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution number 20-106. To consider and act upon a resolution approving the appointment of Michael O'Reilly, Ferkel to First Selectman's Business and Industry Advisory Committee as an ex-officio member representing the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Have a second for that, Mr. O'Rourke?
Second.
Keller? Anybody have discussion?
Madam Chair, this is to, as you know, the committee has representation from a couple of Planning and Zoning Commission members. One, which is the Chair, which, as you know, due to the unfortunate loss of Porter, the Chair is now Michael O'Reilly.
Okay, thank you. In favor, let's vote.
Madam Chair, before we do?
Sure, I'm sorry, just to see.
I just want, now that we're finally in person, I do just want to take a brief moment and thanks for Mr. Porter for all that he did. And just in memory of him for all that he did with the town and our thoughts to his family.
Okay, thank you. In favor of this appointment? Raise your hand if you're saying aye. Now, it's hard with the Plexiglas, so I'm assuming everybody's saying aye. So it's a nine to zero. Going on to action items. I believe B, Mr. Rooney has one on B and then one on EMS Building Committee.
Madam Chair, we took delivery of doing so. We've had some time, we hadn't met because of COVID. The Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Parks and Rec. We met on October 21st here, and the purpose of the meeting was, is to decide on leadership. Luckily enough, I was voted at that committee. Mr. Reed was one of the secretary. Dee Dee Martin also attended. That was the business for that committee that night. Thank you.
Yes. Park and Rec, if I may?
Certainly.
From that committee. I talked to Ms. Oros and she wanted me to stress to the council that they had had a successful fall, lots of outside activities. And the camping at Webb Mountain had been a big hit during the situation, and new sports were using safely Wolf Park. And that the scarecrow contest was still going on down a great hollow and urged people to go down and ask to vote on the scarecrows. Want me to tell you that?
Thank you. And Mr. Reed, can you talk about action item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters?
Yeah, I'm actually happy to not have to read that thing this week. That's good. We did meet and all of our subjects were, will be brought up tonight on the council.
Thank you. Okay, going on to, that's it for action items. Going on, there's no unfinished business for New Business. A, Resolution 20-107, Mr. O'Rourke.
Madam Chair, would you like a page for me?
I did have an update on the EMS building.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Don't mind, it's not a long one.
Mr. Rooney, Mr. Rooney has also on the EMS.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, the EMS, the same night, took advantage of the ability to meet in person. It was nice to see everybody, everybody's doing well. We met on October 21st, 6:30. Just to discuss the progress of the EMS building. We are now, as of today, I spoke to Burlington Construction. The committee agreed to start obtaining bids for this project. Put a document provided to us by Jakunski and Humes. They're under advisement to use, when possible, the local contractors based on our purchasing policy. So we're going to try our best to keep, you know, this project using people in town. So you should suspect to see a good amount of those bids starting to come in probably second week, third week in November. We do have some limitations of time because of the steep grant. So we need to kind of get a move on in this thing. Obviously, COVID set us back a few months. But we're making steps, strides to make up some lost time. So that's why the committee made the agreement to get now so we could get a cost perspective at real time. As we know, and some of us that are in these trades, there's some labor issues at times and some supply chain problems. So it'll give us a better idea of, you know, where we are under current conditions. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Rooney, Mrs. Martin?
Mr. Rooney, could I ask you a question?
Of course.
Do you have an end date on the acceptance of bids? A cutoff date?
We don't have an end date. We just spoke today with Burlington. There's a few things that he has to get together in regards to the steep grant estate and that our bids go in accordance to that item. So he did say to me that he's looking at it November 18th, that he should have the bids by, but God willing.
Okay, thank you.
That answers your question.
Any other questions of Mr. Rooney? Okay, so going to New Business, Resolution 20-107.
Madam Chair, First Selectman's.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So I distributed the hard copy of the dais earlier we should have in front of you. First of all, I attached the Friday update that I sent out, as it's been keen to give a community a weekly update, so that is in your packet as well. But I wanted to give you some additional information as of this afternoon. First, the Governor's Office today reported the state's positivity to be rated 2.2%. Averaging, a weekly average now of 2.4%, which again, has been increased, still relatively low compared to other states, but it has been an increasing trend. The update on Friday, so the report that I gave during the day on Friday was, as a Thursday night report, Friday, DPH had reported us with 181. Friday went up, 187, and today's report shows 196. So clearly, the number of total positive cases increasing to totals that daily, you know, new additions that we hadn't observed since May. But one thing that's important to note is we are seeing instances of test results being reported for earlier test dates over a week prior and several even as of today that were from test dates in August. And what that is most likely to do is, there are times where DPH times a bulk of test results in the database all at once, and that could be due to perhaps a lab that hadn't reported a chunk of time, or there was some issue like that that comes into play. These latest issues, my understanding is more likely due to address corrections and other data adjustments that DPH does. So sometimes cases actually drop out of our database. They determine they weren't really Monroe cases and they disappear. And then sometimes things appear that could be weeks and in this case, months old. So in light of that, and an desire to really more clearly communicate the trends and to be more in sync with how the state is now reporting with this color-coded system by town. We've taken the data and, you know, I know obviously the overall case numbers are informative, but I think it's more informative, more descriptive of the trends to plot those against the test date. So what we're taking is all the cases and plotting them by the week that the test was done. So I've updated the graph. We put that graph out last week. It's been updated based on today's data, and it's also including the week that just ended, which was not included, obviously, on Friday because the week hadn't ended yet. However, I have highlighted those last two weeks in particular because we know the data is likely incomplete. As I'm in, it will get added to whatever week they occurred in. It is, you know, obviously, the more recent the week, the more likely it's going to be a test from that week. So you'll see there that, obviously, there is a trend that's going back up. So it's something we need to be vigilant about. I also wanted to show you a distribution by age, and that's on the second page. On the, this is on the left. I did a snap, this was a graph that was up on our website on May 5th, and it was indicative of everything from the beginning until May 5th. Saw that the distribution, much like the rest of the state, was towards an older population. I asked our Health Director to give me some data strictly for the last three days, which is the chart to the right in blue. And as is being seen throughout the state, you'll see a definite trend towards a younger age group. So that is something we're experiencing here as well. I just want to make sure that that was known. It is also important to note that, you know, not to minimize the fact that we are in a pandemic and there are some serious things to be considered, there are some factors that are markedly different from the spring, and they're important to note. And these were kind of itemized during the, highlighted today during a press conference. One is that the trend towards the younger, as evidenced here, also is corresponding with a trend of less severity. So these are healthier people, they have less, they're likely to not have comorbidities. As a result, there's been less impacted hospitalizations as well. And anecdotally, less, you know, ICUs, less time in the hospital for those that do get admitted. We've been told that the increased use of masks appears to not just reduce transmission, but also reduces the viral load if someone were to be infected when mask, mask use is adhered to. So that has been shown to have a result in a less serious disease for those who may actually get infected. There are improved medications and therapies. There's going to be, we were told today, more outpatient use of some of the antivirals. And also just the medical experience. They're using different therapies to try to not put people on ventilators, basically to not have to put people on ventilators so early, more use of oxygen and things like that. So that is improved. And then the contact tracing, which you're all well aware of, identifies positive cases earlier, which allows for earlier isolation of those cases and a more targeted quarantine of exposed individuals. All those factors seem to contribute to an overall reduction in the mortality rate. And as I said, the percentage of admissions for COVID cases, ICU care, likely stay. So again, obviously, something we need to pay attention to and be cognizant of, and still encourage people to follow the guidelines. But it's an ongoing pandemic as it evolves, but it's important to note that the current pandemic is very different, we're in a different set of circumstances than we were in the spring. So we have to take that into consideration as well. That's my report.
Thank you. Going on to New Business.
Mr. Kellogg, number one, I'm sorry about your dog.
Oh, thank you.
Indolences. And I understand Youth Commission? Is it disbanded? Is it?
The Youth Commission is not disbanded. We did receive a few resignations. Couple came in, gosh, I'd have to think about exactly what week they were, but they were, I'd say probably a couple of weeks ago, maybe. And then one came in last week as well. Indicated to me that they simply had other priorities with family, work, et cetera. We have a conversation with some of those individuals just to understand what's going on, get their input. I did receive some suggestions of certain things that we can possibly do to kind of forge more collaborations with some other groups that, for reason there may have been a perception could not occur, but it certainly can. So for example, Youth Commission working more closely with Department of Rec Department. I have a solid idea, there's absolutely no reason why that can't happen. So the situation as it is right now is that there are, they don't have enough numbers to have a quorum currently to have a meeting, but my intention was to keep those individuals engaged and work on whatever they can absent a meeting towards their. But as you know, they, the commission had already canceled their trick-or-trunk, and so the events that they were working on, there's no immediate impact to those activities. No, we simply need to appoint new commissioners.
Okay. It's my understanding there's only one left.
No, there are two people on the commission currently.
There are other people on it besides one?
Two, there are two members in the commission currently.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Going on to New Business, A, Resolution 20-107, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding a 8-24 municipal referral for the abandonment of Old Web Road, also known as Old Station House Road. Do I hear a second for this resolution?
Second.
Aye.
Nathan Mauer.
Oh, okay. You know, it's so hard to clear well when they are. Okay, we have a second discussion, Mr. Kellogg.
I don't believe the resolution is there.
Okay. The county's not here to discuss that.
I, Evan, can you mute? Ben, can you mute for a minute? We're getting some feedback. We just need to, I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't hear, I didn't actually hear the resolution.
Okay, so this is the one, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding 8-24 municipal referral for abandonment of Old Web Road, also known as Old Station House Road. So have a second discussion.
Madam Chair, if, nobody read the resolution.
Sean needs to read the resolution.
I was going to jump in here with this. Sorry, I move that the following resolution hereby be adopted. Resolution 20-107, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding state statute 8-24 municipal referral of the abandonment, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding 8-24 municipal referral of the abandonment, discontinuance pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 13A, 49A, close parentheses, of Old Web Road, AKA Old Station House Road.
Second. Second, aye, Mr. former Keller.
Sorry.
Now discussion, Mr. Keller.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt. The resolution is on the bottom of my memo, which specifies the exact roadway that we're referring to. There is a, there was a minor adjustment, amendment to that that OLA discussed that was in, you send your, in the email communication from Mr. Marino.
We're making a motion with that modification, correct?
All you're doing is taking my proposed resolution 20-107. I would simply ask that you add the parenthetical language that Attorney Marino added after the word.
Can you see that, Sean?
Madam Chair, I might be able to read this. Motion to amend the resolution on the table as follows. Resolution number 20-107, resolve that in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes, section 8-24, the Monroe Town Council hereby refers the abandonment, and then parenthetical, discontinuance pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section 13A-49A, end parenthetical, of Old Web Road, AKA Old Station House Road, as depicted on that certain map entitled Site-Specific Existing Conditions, Plan Topographic Survey of Property Located at 1603 and 1615 Monroe Turnpike, parenthetical, C-D-O-T, Route Number 111, end parenthetical, Monroe, Connecticut, Prepared for Bruce C. Mondo, Sheet 3 of 3, Scale 1 Inch = 30 Feet, Date 11-17-2016, Prepared by Lewis Associates for the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and report.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Amended motion, Mr. former Keller, seconds of discussion. Mr. Keller.
You're doing discussion on the motion to amend the resolution, correct?
Correct.
This is, this is the proper resolution, in my opinion.
We could probably go right to that.
Okay. So we'll vote on this? All in favor? It's amended motion? Passes on nine to zero? Okay.
Now we're back to the issue.
Right, so you want to read it again, Sean?
It's now just discussion on the amended motion.
Discussion.
Okay, so the discussion.
Discussion on the resolution? Okay. So, thank you, Madam Chair. So in my packet, in the packet, I'm sorry, my memo introduces the further correspondence. Marino, who is on the call, virtually here, go-to-meeting. As I put in, there was a longstanding matter that the parties involved advised that has been resolved. Attorney Marino has been working on behalf of the town to address a request that subsequently came in for us to consider abandonment, which is also known as discontinuance, depending on which statute you're referring to, of this roadway. As you all probably know, I left on the dais, in addition to the information from Attorney Marino, further correspondence that the town received this afternoon from Attorney McTaggart, which you added to correspondence this evening, and then subsequently a communication in reply to that from Attorney Marino, which was the genesis of adding the parenthetical language to the resolution. So with that, Mr. Attorney Marino is on the line. I'd be happy to let him explain this more fully.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Ladies and gentlemen, before you is an 8-24 referral, which will send the matter to the zoning commission for a report. Depending upon how that report is fashioned, if it's a favorable report, it'll come back to this body for consideration of the primary issue, and only a majority vote will be required. If a negative report is returned to this body, then a supermajority vote will be required. So the only issue for the body tonight is the referral to the zoning commission. I would just point out, to the extent that anyone is curious, the distinction between the words abandonment and discontinuance, it is quite common in the state of Connecticut when a town is giving up an interest in a public right-of-way, whether it be a paper road or a paved road, that it is referred to as an abandonment. The distinction is really one of legal significance, but not of grammatical significance. The legal significance is that the concept of abandonment arose through the common law over the centuries. The concept of discontinuance is one that is created by statute, 13A-49A specifically. The town is following the discontinuent statutory procedure while it does not refer to 8-24. An 8-24 referral is required when the town seeks to abandon any interest in any, any public right-of-way. So the statutes themselves go back and forth on the use of the word. There is appellate authority, as I cited in my email of this evening to opposing counsel, that the actual use of the words is not germane to the discussion. It's just that we follow the proper statutory protocol, which we, we will do when this matter returns to you, whether it be, you know, at your next meeting or the meeting thereafter. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think going into the substance of this might be better served in the future, but whatever the pleasure of the body is.
Okay.
I would just also add, it was in my memo, but I wanted to just also state that I did confirm with the appropriate department heads that there is no known, or unaware of any public process that would cause us for concern in abandoning and/or discontinuing the road.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Reed?
We, we did discuss this in LNA. It is, not to trivialize 8-24, but that's, I think we should just make sure we're all understanding, we're not approving this tonight. It's going to Planning and Zoning on a referral. We felt that from an LNA perspective, all legislative matters and administrative body were covered. The explanation in the memory on the memory from Attorney Marino was sufficient.
So would you like to make a motion for this? To refer to Planning and Zoning?
It's already been.
It's already done.
Oh, it's been done?
Madam Chair.
Oh, because you, okay.
Madam Chair. Also, thank you very much, Attorney Marino, for your, for the email and for that copy. I did do some extensive research on this as well before we got this. But after we got the letter from the letter from Attorney McTaggart, my research turned out basically exactly what we saw, we see here from, and was explained from Attorney Moreno, between the fact that, one, this is only the referral, as well as the now amended motion in front of us adding the language of discontinuance. I don't think it was necessary, but it does create just an extra level of protection that I don't think we have any worry in moving this forward as a referral.
Okay. So we can go on to the next resolution?
Need to vote.
We have to, that's right, though, we thought we should vote. All right, so all in favor of Resolution 20-107? So I see nine to zero. Thank you. Going on to B, Resolution 20-108, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding answer funds from contingency. Mr. Rook?
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution number 20-108, resolve that the first electman is authorized to appropriate up to $80,000 from the Board of Finance contingency account for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021 pursuant to Chapter 8, Section 7i of the Charter for the Town of Monroe, and that this appropriation of available funds are necessary to effectuate budget revisions resulting from previous authorized wage adjustments not reflected in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 adopted budget.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second for this?
Second.
Mr. Foreman Kellogg again? Okay, discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to be clear, this has nothing to do, nothing here flies in the face of anything that's been previously agreed upon for this council. We have is a situation where there were some adjustments in the prior fiscal year that had already been, that were in the process of approval, and there was a prior resolution, you'll probably recall, that moved funds out of contingency during the last fiscal year into the budget. That process, however, was still underway when we contemplated the current fiscal year budget. So you basically have the impact of prior wage increases from a prior fiscal year in one case that need to be pushed into the current year as well. In the case of the police union, you also have the issue that there were, that bargaining unit also had to have funds moved forward. You'll know that they took a different approach relative to their economic concessions. So there were some increases, there were also give up of positions and give up of holiday pay. So all that now needs to be flushed into the current year budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so let's vote on Resolution 20-108. All in favor? So I see a nine to zero. Resolution C, 20-109, to consider and act upon a letter of engagement with Rosemark Law. So Rook?
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution number 20-109, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the engagement letter and any associated documents binding between Rosemark Law or Legal Services as special counsel.
Do I hear a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Rook?
Correct.
Discussion?
So, as you know, we are in the process of contemplating a ground lease relative to a proposed communications tower on town property, and that process is still underway and is not yet ripe for council consideration. However, in the process of negotiating that, the town attorney has identified a need for some specific matter expertise, and in line with that, he has gotten some recommendations and recommending Rosemark Law represent the town as special counsel in that regard. And of course, Attorney Moreno is here if you have any question in that regard.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Only that this did go through LNA and was vetted thoroughly through LNA and approved for, to move forward to the council for consensus.
Thank you. So we're going to vote on Resolution 20-104. All in favor? Passes nine to zero. And actually, it was on the other page. I ready turn back to Mrs. Martin, Resolution 20-103.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I don't know if I misheard, but I just want to make sure for the record that's 20-109.
Yes.
20-10.
I just said that aloud, Mr. Mauer, that I had ready turned the page from Mrs. Martin, what she wanted. Okay, so we're doing Resolution 20-103. Resolve that, and you might as well read this, Mr. Rook.
I move that the following resolution be hereby adopted. Resolution 20-103, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the bill of sale, contract and warranty agreement, and any associated documents binding between Freightliner of Hartford, Inc., for the purchase of a 2021 Freightliner 114 SD truck for the Department of Public Works.
Do I hear a second for this motion?
Second.
A second by Mr. Foreman Kellogg. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
This is very similar, this is the exact same terms and conditions relative to the sales agreement, warranty agreement that we've seen in the past from Freightliner, which is why I had requested, this is a part of the consent calendar, but obviously, there's some questions, so happy to entertain if the questions are.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Actually, I don't have that many questions now because my understanding is, and I'm wrong, that this has been vetted through LNA.
That is correct, it did go to LNA, and the Reed can confirm that it was referred to the council with.
Yes, that's a yes.
Mr. Demaki is on the line if you have any questions.
I had a question about where it is on the budget, where, because I don't, I don't know if it's in the capital budget. I didn't see it in the, in Public Works budget.
This is capital.
This is, so why is this not going to a town vote?
Sorry, why is it what?
Going to a town?
It already has.
This has? Okay, okay. And is this under capital, is this one of the six-wheel or 10-wheel truck replacement plan?
Yes, but I don't know if it's six or 10. Chris?
Could you give me, Chris Noackey, your Public Works director? This is the six-wheeler. Purchased as part of the six and 10-wheeler package.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? Let's vote on this one. All in favor? Passes nine to zero. Last thing is public participation.
Anyone attending remotely who wishes to speak during second public participation, please remember to unmute indicated desire to speak.
I can adjourn this meeting at 43. Thank you.